Well, good morning, everybody. Staff meeting Tuesday, November 18th. This is, we have several topics we're going to cover today. A bulk of it's going to be in the planning department. Welcome. A lot of people here that are guests today. Welcome. We're glad you're joining us today. So we got a lot to cover. Let's get to work. Tom.
Two, two main topics, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner. Lindsay is going to talk about first, take a few minutes and talk about arena capital expenses that are facing us as soon as budget year 27. We met with AJ and his staff on Friday and got some updated numbers, and we think it's important that the commission hear that as soon as possible. And then, you're correct, Chairman, the bulk of this meeting is Mr. Waddle and a litany of items in the zoning world to cover with the commission. So he thinks he can get it done in 90 minutes. So I think we'll, we'll, we'll test him. So Lindsay, you want to start us up and away we go.
Hey, Lindsay, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. So yes, just for some background before we even start looking at the documents at your table. You'll remember that at the February retreat this year, we talked about some of the outstanding capital needs related to Interest Bank Arena. Just a reminder, that is our facility and we contract out the management of that facility to a company. And to manage it, they do the CIP work themselves, maintain the assets with funding that we get. So we'll get into some of the details. But that's some important background for you to remember. So unfortunately, we are now to a point where we have to start taking into account some of the capital needs that are occurring and anticipated to occur with Interest Bank Arena in our, in our budget, county's budget. So I'm going to review this background slide with you real quick. I do not have it up on screen. I just gave everybody handouts. Everybody here should have a copy. There are some extra copies on the table over there. So the plan for the arena actually started in 2004. There was a voter approved 30-month, 1% sales tax. That was levied and it was actually supposed to be a 36-month-long sales tax. But because enough funding was collected, it was ended early, like six months early. So through that two and a half-year process, the sales tax generated $206.5 million. All of that came to Sedgwick County because of the way the ballot was set up. It's not like the other one cent sales tax we have that's distributed between us and the cities. So the project itself, between buying the properties, demolishing the properties, constructing the building, all of that was $191 million. And that left us with about a $15.5 million balance in an operating and maintenance fund. The construction on the facility started in November of '07, and of course, we had our very first concert in the building, January 9th, 2010. Extra points if you can remember who the first. Good job. Round of applause. That was, that was a good job. Tom was asked that question at a recent leadership wish talk. So anyway. Why he's the county manager and you're the commissioner, right? So also note that in that fund with the $15.5 million, there's also naming rights that are paid by three entities on an annual basis. And you can see those listed here in your third bullet. Of course, the building itself is with Interest Bank. That agreement is in place through 2034. Then we also have the Cessna Plaza and the Spirit Concourse. Now, those agreements both say that they will go through 2029, but each entity has the opportunity to extend it through 2034 with notice by the end of 2027. So that's only a couple of years away, which is kind of crazy to think about. So when those naming rates funds come in, they go into the pot, into this reserve fund. But then most of that is actually turned around and paid to the arena either for the signage that those folks have in that building or for the tickets that they receive as a part of their sponsorship agreements or things like that. We also then have a management agreement. We, we call them SMG. We will all call, always call them SMG because that is what the contract says. But you will hear them called different things in the community because they have gone through a couple of different mergers over time. And they are now today officially known as Legends Global. As of 2025, that's our official name. But in all of our agreements, they are SMG. So that management agreement is unique for us because we have had it with them since 2007. They helped us close out the Coliseum slash pavilions and then started operating the arena from day one. So the agreement that we have that was most recently adopted and approved back in 2020, there was amendment done in 2020. They actually have our contract through 2032, but they can renew for an additional five years over that if they manage to get or earn $1.7 million for Sedgwick County in, in the term that's defined here. And if that happens and they get that additional five-year term, we are close to hitting that. It will not most likely happen this year, but it will most likely happen next year that they will generate that funds because of a really strong 2023. So the agreement that we have, like I said, they do all of the CIP and emergency repair work for us. Now, their CIP looks different than the county's CIP. It can be everything from their food, equipment, to their laptops, to actual project work in the facility. And the way that works is by October 1st of every year. So it does not align with the county's budget process, but by October 1st, every year, they are required to submit to me as the contract administrator, a CIP and operating plan and a budget. And we collect all that information. Now, a few years ago, there was some concern that one person probably shouldn't be making the call on all of that approval of CIP. So we now have three of us, Tom, Justin and I, who vote on any CIP plan that's submitted, as well as any emergency repair that comes in during the course of a year. Maybe a compressor goes down or there's some kind of issue with a chiller for the ice. Those come in, we review those and approve them and pay. So we do not pay a management agreement outright to SMG. That's different than most places. Most places, you'll have a contract to pay X amount of dollars for their management, and then maybe you'll split some funds over that. Instead, we have an agreement that says we don't pay any management agreement, but based on whatever operating income there is, SMG gets to keep the first $400,000 of that as their management agreement, and then anything over that is split 50/50. And so that has been the play in place since I've been the contract administrator. Before that, there were some different machinations in that formula. And then in 2019, again, because we knew that we were starting to draw down that $15.5 million O and M balance as a part of our amended management agreement, they agreed to start assessing a $1.50 facility fee on any ticket. And that is remitted to us at the same time we get any operating income split, and then the county is required to match it. So for the last several years, the only funds that have been paid out of the general fund to the arena reserve have been for the purpose of matching this facility fee, and it is used for capital. The reason we're having this conversation now is the second sheet that you have at your tables. This is from your most recent monthly financial report. And what you can see is unlike the rest of your monthly report, it actually has totals from 2005 on through 2024, and then just a current year balance. And what you'll see is at the end of this last month, we were down to $768,000 in that reserve. So we need to start having conversations about the long term. So I don't have this copy for you, but I do want to show you that we do some pretty sophisticated revenue forecasting for the O and M reserve. We look at all of the funds coming in each year from those naming rights, from the operating income, from the facility fee, as well as the capital improvements that are approved, the emergency repairs that occur and anything else that may come up. And so what we are seeing is that in the most recent capital improvement plan that just came to us, now I said October 1st, but we had some back and forth with the arena and on Friday AJ brought to our monthly business meeting the revised capital improvement program for the arena for next year and then five years. It's actually got a 20-year summary in here. And so for next year, the approved CIP that we agreed upon on Friday, which is why we wanted to get this in front of you soon, is $750,000 for 2026. The way that works under the management agreement is we cut a check to them in January. Then they use those funds for the projects that have been approved. And then at the end of the year, they provide us a reconciliation because those are technically county assets that are purchased with these funds because we have a management agreement that's operating it on our behalf. So we are now in a position where we have enough money to cover next year. We feel confident about that with some of the operating income and the facility fee that we expect we'll get in March or April of next year. But I have asked Lorian as a part of our next financial forecast to include $2 million per year of general fund cash to be transferred from the county general fund to the arena reserve as a source of funding. So what that means is that will become until we have some other system in place. That will be how we fund capital improvements, emergency repairs, anything like that. The idea would be that that $2 million would go into the fund and stay there. They may or may not spend it all each year, but it would allow a balance to be there in case there is a significant emergency repairs as this building gets older. So just wanted to be fully transparent with you. Follow up from February. This literally just happened Friday where we got this updated plan that makes sense. And so I wanted to get it in front of you as soon as possible. So that's what I've gotten. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Sure.
Well, we knew this day was coming. You know, this, this, I think, highlights the importance of the principle. I keep talking about the principle that core functions of government should be funded through property taxes and discretionary funding, things that are culture and recreation. And I'll put Interest Bank Arena on that list should be funded through sales tax. This is not, to use property tax funds as a source for this arena, my opinion is philosophically at least inappropriate to me. So I, I probably won't be supporting that, but I can just say this, that this highlights the, the discussion that sales taxes is being, there are overlapping discussions by lots of different municipalities, including the state of Kansas. And there are a lot of municipality, but they're talking about a half percent sales tax that I've heard for our community colleges to reduce the mill levy dependency of about 15 or so counties in our state. So there's, there's discussion at the state level for sales tax, and then that would not be voter approved. That would be just legislative. And then I understand this Wichita, I mean, the words on the street that they're talking about a sales tax. I'm not sure if it's 1% or half percent. Do you know?
Uh, 1%.
1%. And this is to fund all kinds of things, starting with, I think, performing arts, and it goes on to things, things, things like police and fire. Am I right about that? So they're talking about funding core functions of government through sales tax, which again, which again, I would, no money's fungible in the budget technically. But it seems to me that property taxes should be funding police and fire. So I don't know that I like the idea of using a sales tax for that, but I also don't like the idea of using property taxes to fund a CIP, long-term CIP commitment to Interest Bank Arena. I have talked about this before. I, I don't know if I have enough of these. I think I have enough for the table. I don't have enough for the audience behind me, but you, you hold those out. That's what I, Chairman, may I hand, may I just walk you through this real quick? This is some data I got since Friday. This is about sales taxes of Sedgwick County, and I wanted to point out all the different sales taxes. If you look, there's three pages here. Let me walk you through that. The first one is talking about sales tax rates. This came from the state of Kansas, the Department of Revenue. I downloaded this data. And you can see that most of our cities, including the 1% sales tax from the county, in the state, 6.5%. There is, there's details on the right and down that third column, you can see the total sales tax. There are some districts that are smaller than cities that have higher rates. And you'll see that shaded section at the bottom on the first page. You can see as high as 10.5% sales tax. But most of the cities are city and county only, and there's a number of them that have 1% sales tax, a couple of them have a half percent sales tax. So first page hopefully does make sense there. So the appetite to go higher, I don't know how much appetite there is. But I think that getting our idea out to the public, if we think this is an idea worthy of discussion, we need to at least be transparent about that and let the public know there is at least a discussion. And the majority of my proposal would be, would be revenue replacement, not increasing revenue. All the other proposals, including the city that I can tell, is all based on new spending. I don't know that they're talking about, they talk about property tax relief, but in reality, we're talking about a very small amount of property tax relief. And, and I'm talking about maybe a mill or two. And I think most of the cities are talking, I should say, the state's talking about new spending. And the city, as far as I know, is talking about primarily new spending. And again, how much of that money would go towards property tax relief? I don't know. On page two, you can see, I, the same data you see on page one, but I just focused on the municipalities. And I talked about how much is one mill worth in every city and of course, the county. So you see the top row, there's countywide, one mill in Sedgwick County, according to our recent, most recent data, $7.546 million. Okay, so we, we know we're, the last time we received money from the sales tax fund, it was $39,122,464. Do the simple math there. That means we offset essentially 5.18 mils of property tax. Do you guys agree with those numbers? Okay, Lindsay says yes. So 5.18 mils of our budget is coming from sales tax. And we know half the money goes from, I'm sorry, half the money is for infrastructure and half the money is for general fund. But if you're not wasting money, you know, you're not frivolously spending money, then I would argue that if it wasn't for the sales tax, you'd have to levy property taxes to do the same things. So the question is, well, you know, if you ask someone, should we repeal the 1% sales tax, everyone immediately would say, well, yeah, that's a great idea. I hate sales tax. But you say, well, we'd have to raise your property taxes by 5.18 mils. People think, well, I don't think that's a good idea. So they rec, they recognize the, the value of the sales taxes that has offset 5.18 mils of property tax. But wait, there's more. There's 20 cities here, and I did the same math for all 20 cities. This data came out Friday. You look at their 2026 mill levy dollars in their, in their assessed value for the, for the current budget year. So I have their assessed value and I have their, their dollars from sales tax. And I calculate the mill levy equivalent of what they're getting from sales, from the 1% sales tax alone. That very right-hand column there shows you that most of the cities are well above, you know, 20, around 20 mils or even higher. Some as high as 30 mils, 31 mils, 27 mils, 24 mils. You can see how much sale, how much property tax they're not levying because of the 1% sales tax. If you live in Wichita, which is the majority of our residents in Sedgwick County, you have a 25.328 mil reduction because of the city and the county together. The mail rate, the mail rate reduction of our 1% sales tax has provided the equivalent of 25.328 mils property tax. There's nothing more important, there's probably not a more important discussion in Kansas right now than, than property taxes. And the idea that we would, we would float Interest Bank Arena with the property tax, in my opinion, is just not tenable. We have got to find another solution. And again, with all the other sales tax discussions going on, if we're going to do anything on this, today is the day, maybe not today, but this year is the year. We need to get this conversation moving. If, if the city is serious about theirs, I understand in March, they're thinking about having a vote for the citywide sales tax. I don't know if that would pass or not. I don't know that I would want to float this in the same election cycle. I think that would be a huge mistake. But last time the city did a sales tax referendum, it went down in flames. And this particular sales tax referendum, if I understand, includes a little bit of slush fund for each of the council members. Means they can spend money in their own districts however they want. Again, I think that's the reason the last sales tax failed was because of that very same idea. And again, the last time it was about transportation, infrastructure and water. Some of that is core functions of government, but the, what they termed as the slush fund, I think, killed it. And, and so it went down in flames. There was a huge campaign against it. It was all new spending. It was a new revenue, new taxes, higher taxes. And it did not do well. So whether this would pass in March, I don't know. If we are serious about doing a sales tax potentially to offset all of our culture and recreation, all of it, including the zoo, offset any funding to exploration place, should we ever fund them again? Or any of the other seven or eight cultural wreck things plus community programs. The only new spending I would be wanting to support in this proposal would be a stipend, if you will, like about $1 million for the second light. Only because I think this is a countywide problem. It's not just the city of Wichita. And I think that there's, my personal opinion is I don't think there's, there's going to pass. If they did a sales tax just for performing arts, I think it would pass. But in a package of ideas that has been promoted or proposed, I don't know that it's going to pass in its current rumor mill. How the rumors are flowing out right now. I don't know that would pass in that, in that form. If there's does not pass, then I think it opens up the opportunity for the county to have this conversation for real. And I would, I would say probably towards the end of 2026, this needs to appear on either the, the August or November ballot. And in doing that, if it would pass, this will provide the revenue for Interest Bank Arena forever. And to me, that's the whole point of this discussion. If we're going to talk about Interest Bank Arena, how do you want to fund that going long-term? Is it property taxes or is it sales taxes? The sales taxes, we don't really have. I, I don't know that we have enough in the budget right now to cover that. So the, the new spending I would talk about would be a, we begin the $2 million out of the 35 roughly million dollars that generate today. A 0.25% sales tax would generate about 35, 30, maybe closer to $36 million potentially. And of that, about one, I'm sorry, about $2 million would go to Interest Bank Arena and $1 million we go to a second light. The rest of that $32 million would be to offset existing responsibilities of our existing budget. So it'd be almost entirely dollar-for-dollar mill levy reduction. And people are screaming about property taxes. If you want this idea of revenue replacement to take on these, I think, two new obligations and offset a whole bunch of other things in the budget. This is a chance we have to have this conversation mature. We have got to get it through this commission if we're going to do this. I know people will say this is a new tax. It's not, I'd say the new tax portion of that would be, would be $3 million out of $35 million. So that would be new tax. The other $32 million is to replace property taxes. And if we're going to do this, we've got to get it through this commission. We got to get our cab boards to, to talk about it. We got to get the public to be aware of it. And you have to have the legislature approve it. The city doesn't have to do that. City can throw this on the, on the March ballot without any legislative action. We would need to go to the legislature and I, my intent would be that we would, we would not put it on the ballot if theirs was to pass. But if theirs does not pass, I would like to have us have the legislative part taken care of. But we can target a August or November ballot for a proposal to offset about, about 4.75 mils of property. We don't, we don't, we'd be quite that much. It'd be about, it'd be about four, about four and a half mils roughly. And you have to, have to do the math here, but about four and a half mils of property tax would go away. And that would be 25 cents of tax on $100 with the retail spending. So if we're going to have the discussion, Mr. Chairman, we need to have this discussion for real. This commission needs to either agree to do something, or if we're going to reject the idea outright, that's fine. But let's make a decision some point soon. I've been talking about this for years at this point. And if you want to term this as a, as a new tax, I, I'm not interested in a new tax. I'm interested in replacing property taxes, but I'm also interested in not putting Interest Bank Arena, a $2 million problem on the property tax rolls. That, in my opinion, is not, not a solution. I cannot support that probably. Right now, I won't say how I vote, but I just can tell you, it doesn't sound like something I can support. So Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what to do here, but I think we, we need to have a different discussion about how to take care of Interest Bank Arena.
Well, appreciate the information. This was about receiving and filing, so to speak, this information. We knew, as you said at the beginning, Commissioner, we knew this day was coming, that that fund was going to deplete and we'd have to find. I am in agreement that I want to find a different way to fund all cultural art attractions in this community, including Interest Bank Arena off of property taxes and onto another stream of revenue. So that conversation will continue. I also don't want to get ahead of what Wichita has coming. There's a lot of different ideas, a lot of speculation. I, I do know that some of the conversations they're having about capital projects and property tax relief. The property tax relief is rather sizable. I think it's four to six mils of property tax annually is what I've been told. So there's an offset there, but I don't want to get ahead of the electors over there. I think that's, that's out of respect. I think they're, they're going to have some conversations coming within the next couple of weeks that'll help shape the discussions here. But I am with you. I want to find an opportunity to offset property taxes and reduce our dependency. And I think we can utilize sales tax to do something like that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, should they move forward? My, my intent would be to, to, to put this in the round file and be done with it. If theirs was not to, if they don't, if they decide not to go forward or they're not, they're not successful in going forward, this conversation needs to be matured. So I might guess my point is, I don't want to get ahead of them, but I do want to say that no matter what they do, we need to get this through us with the contingency that should they not be successful, what they're talking about.
Agreed.
That we have a legislative permission to go forward. And again, I'm not saying we would go forward. It all depends on what happens with them. We need to, again, I don't want our conversation to die on the fact that we don't know what they're doing.
I think we're going to find out pretty quick. So thank you for that, Commissioner.
Lindsay, back to your presentation. Thank you. So we had 15 million in reserve from year 08ish or nine or something, whenever we started.
Right. So basically after construction, we had 15 and a half million.
What I'm getting at is how did, how did we arrive at a $2 million number that you're going to propose? I know it's an educated guess, but trying to do 15 million over the last 15 years, it's about one.
Well, so that, but there was also operating income that had come into the fund in those years. There were a couple of years where we made more than a million dollars to offset some of that. So we did like the arena entrance C construction, which was significant. You also might recall that we replaced the scoreboard in there. So there are a couple of different ways we come at that. First of all, we know that in order to be competitive for attracting NCAA events, we need to keep the facility in good shape. There's extreme competition. So while individual years may not require $2 million, we do know that occasionally there will be the marquee that needs to be replaced or the scoreboard that needs to be replaced, or the banners within the facility that need to be replaced. And when that happens, those will be significant outlays. Just knowing that it was $2 million in 2019, we can only imagine what it will be the next time it needs to be replaced. And so that's, that's kind of idea number one. Idea number two is that, like I said, they do have to produce a capital improvement plan each time or each year as a part of that October 1st. So what we have on, I'm going to put my glasses on, we have a total five-year, 10-year, 15-year, 20-year cost included in here of 24.1 million over 20 years. And that doesn't include emergency repairs. That doesn't include inflation in those things. So that's where the $2 million of yours came from, recognizing that our emergency repairs are going up every year. And as the facility ages, I expect that'll only get more expensive. So hopefully that answers your question fairly.
Okay. All right. We're going to transition. While we're transitioning, Scott, why don't you come up? While we're transitioning, I would just say that this is a really important conversation, that the voters of this county approved a 1% sales tax to build this facility with the expectation, and it's incumbent on us to make sure that this facility is in good condition. How we do that is the topic of conversation. How we fund that is the topic of conversation. What is not up for debate is that we cannot, we have to do something here. The voters approved this. They expect us to steward this well. And if we're going to have it, we're going to do it. We're going to do it well. So. Okay, Tom, transition. Scott Waddle, welcome.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. And thank you very much for the trust and the flexibility in this session. We've had a number of different planning items that have come forward and we've added some things to the agenda. Not all of them will be in the same amount of length. There's a few that are pretty in-depth. There are a number that are just quick verbal updates. So thank you for the flexibility. The other thing too is I want to acknowledge that we have the chairperson from the MAPC Advanced Plans here. So Mr. Aldrich has joined us. So thank you, sir, for being here.
Bob, welcome.
And then a number of the topics, I just want to highlight real quick. I think a number of the topics are coming up because they're zoning related. And in the unincorporated county, I think some people move out there for the peace and quiet. They want to have this kind of country environment. And at the same time, we have kind of this not conflict, but we have this other tension of there are people who move out to the county to be able to do whatever they want with their property. And I think that you'll see that in some of the zoning conversations that we're about to take, take place in. So but real quick, before we do that, I do want to a quick point of history. I don't know if you know this, but the inventor of the Ferris wheel and the inventor of the merry go round never met. Did you know this? Oh, it's a shame. Yeah, they traveled in different circles. Oh, okay. All right. So there's some pretty serious stuff here. So I wanted to kind of lighten the mood a little bit. Okay, so event centers transitioning now to event centers in the county. So this is a topic that you've seen before. I'm going to try and go through it relatively briefly, but please pause me if you have any questions or if you'd like any additional details. So obviously here to provide information, answer questions, but there are a number of things. This is a difficult topic for a number of reasons. And three of the things that have come up so far have been enforcement and noise, minimum size of the property required for this, and also what should the setback distances be? So just keep those in mind, if you would, as we go through this one. So in order to accomplish our goals here, we're going to go through these different topics here. First one being the process. So in terms of the process, this is going through a standard process we do for zoning amendments. So advanced plans, and then it'll come to you. It's come to you right now as a staff meeting. It'll go back to advanced plans, ultimately MAPC, and then to both the governing bodies. In terms of the background on this one, this one goes back to 2016. There were changes made to the unified zoning code to allow options for having event centers. If you had more than 20 acres, you're allowed to do it by right. And if it's less than 20 acres, it's a conditional use. Now, there's also agritourism. I'm not really going to cover that because it's kind of its own separate thing, so to speak. So really just focusing on these. So in 2023 and since then, there have been some complaints that have come up from these. Some of those instances have been pretty intense. But generally, the things that we hear about are noise, trash, dust, and also signage that gets left out. So there's been a number of meetings that have happened since then, and I think that this reflects kind of the challenge of this. What, what's the right fit for this community, right? So and again, some, some other discussions that have continued. So the definition of an event center, it's a premises rented out, not repeated on a regular basis. So the thing I want to emphasize is that this is not for someone who's having a wedding on their property. Or if you're having a friend over to have a wedding on your property or you're celebrating an anniversary or something. This is about renting a facility for people to come and celebrate at your, at a given property. So currently it's permitted in the zoning districts up there. Those are pretty intensive zoning districts. And again, is permitted by right in RR if the property is 20 acres or more. And they're in compliance with a number of conditions that we'll, we'll highlight in just a moment. If it's less than 20 acres in RR, then they have to, then the conditional use is required. And this is when you will often see them is when these conditional uses are working through. It's sometimes pretty spicy cases. In terms of parking requirements, here's, it's one per four. And there's lighting provisions that are required in terms of not shining into your neighbor's property. Currently, the setbacks are 100 feet. This has been an area of discussion, so we'll cover that in just a little bit. And then with noise, there's no limitations specifically in the zoning code. Now, when we have for a number of different land uses, we have what are called supplementary land use regulations, which are attached to specific types of uses. And so we have those for event centers. And so these spell out the occupancy, complying with codes, the parking drainage, a number of different things. One of these is also a site plan that needs to be submitted. And I don't want to go through these in depth. I just want you to be aware that they're there. So when we received a request to look into this a little bit more, we started looking at other communities. And here are a number of different communities that we reached out to and looked at the regulations. We have a white paper that provides more background, background information on this. But overall, what we found at the time, and I think this data is from 2000, from 2024, is that 60% of the communities didn't have anything in place and 40%, 20% did, 20% were looking into doing it. So I want to let you know, you're not alone in terms of this topic being a, an issue of kind of concern or question. Likewise, this has been a national topic as well, and the American Planning Association has a brief on this. And so it discusses the typical concerns, which again is reflecting what's happening here as well. So with that information, in terms of what some of the, what the current existing conditions are, what some other communities are doing, we started to look at possible changes. And there are three things that are discussed in terms of potential changes. One is to make changes to the zoning code. Another one is to make changes to the comprehensive plan. And the third one is potentially to introduce a permit system for these. So first we'll talk about zoning. So one possible change is to allow them by right in LC, GC, LI and GI regardless of their size. So right now it's conditional use. If it's less than 20 acres, this would just allow them by right. We'll talk about minimum property size in just a moment. So but then always to require a conditional use in rural residential. And what that does is that gives the planning commission, ultimately you, the opportunity to make sure that there are conditions that are in place that would make it to be a better neighbor if it does get approved. In terms of number of guests, that was a conversation that was had with a number of folks, advanced plans, county commission as well. And currently what's drafted up is that no more than 299, unless it would be approved by another process, if a process is in place. Currently, there is no process, so this wouldn't apply, but if there was, that it would cap it at 299. And the idea there is that if you get above, the discussion was that if you get above this number, the impact is going to be greater so that there probably should be a permit to make sure that the sheriffs and public works and everyone else is kind of coordinated on this. Screening, screening, it's recommended that it's not generally required unless it comes up as a specific condition. And the thought process here is that if the property size is big enough, if the separation, the setbacks is great enough, screening wouldn't be necessary. And then a site plan, of course, required for both by right and conditional use. We want to be able to document where you're doing the activities and what's that, how close is that space to your neighbors? In terms of hours of operation, there are three things listed here. Number one is just plain hours of operation. When can the property be used for an event center? And you can see that it's nine, 9am to 9pm, Sunday through Thursday and 9am to midnight, Friday and Saturday. So you've got that longer time Friday and Saturday. Then we get down to noise amplification outdoors. And the current proposal is to set that at 10 to 9pm. So 10am to 9pm, regardless of whatever day it is. So the idea being that you would not have music or sound going outside of the, of an indoor facility. And then there's indoor amplification. And you can see that that more closely matches the hours of operation. Now, during the discussion, a quick note is that here at a staff meeting, there was a discussion about this. And I do want to emphasize that we have put in a statement to clarify that indoor means that windows and doors would be closed on a facility. So you don't want a barn where they're rocking out and they've got the doors open and essentially the same as an outdoor kind of event. In terms of noise enforcement, this, this is an area of discussion where staff had three different meetings to talk about this. We got the sheriff's office, we got the councilor's office, we got MABCD, and we got planning all together. We had three different meetings because it's nice to have all these regulations, but if a party's blasting at one o'clock in the morning, how do you stop that noise? Because we can go out, MABCD can go out and they can, they can say, hey, you're in violation. We'll send you a letter. And in a month, you've got a month to correct it and we'll come back and check on you later. It doesn't really solve the issue of the noise blasting at one in the morning. The fortunate news is that the sheriff's office does have different remedies that are available outside of zoning. But so I, I'm not going to, well, I guess I should address that in that they are able, and in consultation with the, with the sheriff's office and with the councilor's office, we believe that they are able to go on the property and stop the noise, the generating equipment at the time that they have an incident occurring. So that was, that was a, an interesting conversation to have with him. So the question then for us was, what do we do with the zoning code? There's been discussion about having a decimal level and we had inserted that at 65 decimals based on what other, some other communities have done. After a discussion with the councilor's office in terms of what is more easily defendable, we've replaced that. And what we've done is we've made it so that it's if, if a sheriff's deputy or, or staff can go out there and they can hear it and it's considered to be too loud or an issue, then that crosses that threshold and it's based on the property line. If you can hear that noise and it's excessive at the property line, then it's an issue. Okay, so I'm going to keep moving then. Minimum property size, the two sizes that have been discussed so far have been 40 acres and 20 acres. And the question is, and this is for a minimum size, what should be the minimum size of a property to have an event center on it? So and not necessarily all one parcel. So you can have multiple properties that you would own next to it, but as long as all together, they made up the 40 acres or 20 acres and are all contiguous. Then, and we'll talk more about the challenge with that one too. I'll show you some graphics that show this, but part of the discussion has been 40 acres, the larger the property, the less likely you're going to have an impact on your neighbors, right? The discussion though has been at 40 acres, the economics of owning and operating an event center could become more difficult because the challenge of just the money involved in terms of acquiring the land and the loan that you have to have. So that's been some of the discussion on that. At the same time, one thing to keep in mind is setbacks. So not only property size, but how far away should activity taking place on the property be from the neighbors, from the property line? So currently it's 100 feet. We've discussed 200 feet from the property line and 300 feet from a residential dwelling. And then part of the discussion has also been maybe 400 and 600 feet. And I'll show you graphics to show you what that looks like. So here is a 20 acre property with 100 foot setback on it. So this is the existing regulations for by right. Here is a 40 acre property with a 200 and 300 setback. And this, this line over here, this is where the house, there's a, let's say there's a house next door over here. So that's why you're seeing that kind of odd shape. So the thing about this is that the majority of the property is still available for development. Here's an example where it's 40 acres. And if we double those to 400 and 600, you can see how much of the property is left. You've got that center area. And then likewise, if we go back down to 20 acres at 200 and 300, here's what it looks like. But if we go to the magnified 400 and 600, you can see that there's very little of the property that's left. So that's property size and setbacks. In terms of the fees, because we know the economics have been part of the conversation, here's in general what the fees would look like in terms of the difference in for acreage size. 20 and 40. So it doesn't quite double it in terms of cost. Yes, sir. One time fee. Yep. Okay, so that's the zoning code. I'm going to move forward to the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is important for us because we reflect on the comprehensive plan when we put together our staff recommendations, our staff reports for you. So it simply would add this text into the comprehensive plan to give us guidance about conditional uses should they come forward. The other item then was permitting. I think that this would largely, I, I think this would largely be modeled after the permitting that's been developed for like Lake Gaffin and other public facilities. I think this could be something fairly similar. We've not done this super in depth. These are just some general concepts in terms of you get above that 300 people. So things that could be discussed and addressed as part of that permitting issue. Okay, so feedback received so far. I just kind of want to give you some background in terms of discussions. We've talked about most, most of these so far. So from the BOCC, one of the first things we heard about was permitting for over 100 people. Again, it's at 299 is what's proposed right now. There was discussion about registering as business for these entities. We don't really cover that as part of zoning, but it is a part of the discussion that took place. And then of course, the discussion about noise. Also, more specifically was when talking about noise, we talked about setbacks, decimal levels and interior, and then also the doors and the windows. When we take it back to advanced plans, we got comments about looking at from 40 acres to 20 acres and possibly doubling the setbacks. So you can saw, you saw that that was explored as part of the graphics. And then we also got a discussion about, had a discussion about the financial impact. There were questions about whether or not the county regulations were more restrictive than the city regulations. And in some instances that is true, and I can show you a graph that shows the separation, but in part, I think part of that is a recognition of the unique circumstances out in county and that there's not a lot of noise generally. And that there's not a lot of things interrupting the noise generators from the people who are receiving that sound, right? There's just, there's not a lot of buildings, not a lot of traffic. Discussion about screening requirements, and then again, the decimal levels. How is that measured? And how is that enforced? At the BOCC, we've also received, again, discussions about noise enforcement. How is that done? And that's what we spent a lot of staff time talking about after this meeting. And then we got the general sense that we were headed in the right direction. And that's why today, just focusing really on those three things, those three elements. So again, today it's an opportunity to get some information. I'll answer any questions that you've got and any feedback that you might have on any of those topics.
Okay, Scott, thanks for the rundown. All right, we're on event centers. Any questions or comments? Thanks for mentioning.
Bob, I know you've been involved in this a lot, had minor conversations off and on. How do you feel overall, but more specifically on slide number 22? Zoning world? Seems like zoning might be the most important, but I'm not there. But you want to comment on everything and specifically to that?
But my concerns are, and also a lot of members of the advanced plans and, and Director Whitehead will touch bases on it a little bit. Is that there's a reason why people move into the county. You know, because they don't, they want to have less restrictions and everything else that, that municipalities have and stuff. You have a little bit more freedom, you know. You're out there in the wild and everything else. So now what we're doing is trying to regulate what's going on out in the county. And I, I think we've got to be very, very careful when we do that, what we look at, especially when we're making changes to the zoning code, the cop plans or whatever. Because now that's, that's gospel, that's locked in there. And you know, so I, I I urge caution on this and just because it may sound good, you also have to look at one of the ramifications of any action that, that you, that you might do. Perfect example of the, when you look at the decimal readings, for example. Have you ever been out in the county and, and you hear, or even at your home, you're hearing a distance, a railroad trains and stuff coming through and you hear that little clicking. You know, but to me, that's relaxing. That's like the sleep quicker than anything. But look how far away they are. They're miles away. And sound travels more so out in the, in the county because we don't have the buffers of the buildings and and things of that nature to, to sort of knock that down. So you got to be a little careful there. But the other thing too is that you have to be good, good neighbors. Looking at your setbacks and everything else on your acreage, you know, you know, to me, I would think, and again, this is Bob here. This isn't, I'm not speaking for everybody else. But if you look at 20 acres, you know, for example, and your setbacks and everything else, and then you look at the illustrations when you're looking at 40 acres, now look at the actual size of that property that you could use. It's actually less than what the 20 acres would be. So I think 20 acres or above is a, is a lot of, lot, lot of land, a lot of acreage. You have to have event centers and stuff. We had a, a conditional use come up to is a, you know, from a property in College about a year, a year and a half ago. And you're having event centers and wine tasting and all that weddings and all that good stuff right there. Well, the owner of the property decided Well, the owner of the property decided to sell part of that property to his daughter. Guess what? That holds the problem. She had to come back and get special use permits and conditional uses and everything else. And, you know, I had a bit of a problem like that. They were operating for years and years. And all of a sudden you make that little change and still in the family, you know, but, but still, I think we, we need to be careful what we do. You know, with the regulations. I like the idea of a site plan. You know, that's, that's good, but I think we just need to be careful. On what we do when it comes to, to the freedom that you have in the county compared to what you may have in the city. And the whole reason, well, if you look how many times this has been deferred, for example, from advanced plans. Pretty simple. We want feedback. We want direction from the county commissioners on this.
Thanks, Bob. Like again. Just to comment and a quick question and I'll let others comment. So we went through ironically Commissioner House District, a big deal about noise from that Scott.
Yes, sir.
We battled through it and everything's fine today, I believe, down now. But that was at a, at a building for a. Commercial operating, operating group. But so the noise kind of scares me too, because I, I, I just don't know that. I'm a big fan of trying to. Measure it, limit it, enforce it. Sometimes at a wedding they do fireworks, whatever. That's clearly a noise violation, I'm sure. But the other thing, so that's just my comments, the, but I could have others, but the question is, if we do something. That we would vote on and approve and then naturally we'll find out that we really messed up on an area. How traditionally, how hard is it to change this? Even though it's gone through, everybody's okay and it's gone through the. Whatever that is, that we did twenty five years thing. How, how easy is it for us to change it? To make an exception?
Sure. In terms of, well, there's, there's two things. Number one, they could come and request a variance if it's something they think is unique just to that property. We've always got that option. In terms of changing the code, I think that largely boils down to how much consensus is there to making the change. It's got to go through for us in terms of making it a change to the code, the minimum we would expect is staff will draft it up or, you know, somehow it will get drafted up. It will go to advanced plans, then it will go to M A P C. And then it will come up to the governing bodies. That's the quickest that we can do that process. And I would guess that there you're looking at probably about sixty days to go through that process.
But the variance process, remind me, does that take super majority votes?
It does take, it varies. It's slightly different than just a majority. The, the variance actually comes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Which is the Planning Commission, but with just with different hats on. So they've got fourteen members that have got to convince essentially that their property and their circumstances are so unique. That they shouldn't have to comply with the zoning code in a certain way. And those are not uncommon. We do hear probably about one to two every couple of months. But, but they've got a difficult threshold to kind of get over. There's five things they got to find.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I'm sure. And I would just say, Bob, thank you for being here today. So everybody understands the process. This is the staff meeting and then it goes back to advanced plans. And why Bob is here today is the chair of the advanced, he wants to hear feedback from us so that he can actually get this into movement and move all these things forward. From advanced plans onto the planning commission and back to us. So he's here to hear the feedback today and to walk through this and to get some feedback as well. So Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to back to the noise discussion, what, what the phrase you're using, you're using here says. The noise is plainly audible across the property boundary line. What does plainly audible mean?
Yes, sir. I'm going to lean on Sam from the counselor's office and see if she can help me out with this one.
Good morning Samantha Seeng, Assistant County Counselor. Plainly audible would be determined with not using a hearing aid. To determine if, whether you can hear it or not. And it uses a person of reasonable sensibilities test. And it's just based on a reasonable standard.
If it's a very, very quiet, like a whisper, but I can hear it, that is that a violation?
It may be considered a violation because it's plainly audible.
So I don't know that I like this definition. I think this is, this is not what I intended to be the law. Okay? And again, I tried, my, my recommendation was to make this objective for civil disputes, not for code enforcement. I think if you have it objectively measured. There's ways of doing that. There's, I, again, I used to do sound measurement as one of my, one of my career job responsibilities. If, if this was, say there was an ongoing dispute between an event center and a nearby neighbor. They could have that measured with a traceable. Measurement device to make it objective and they could seek civil belief in a, in a court of law. So I'm not, not intending for the sheriff to be an expert on sound measurements. I'm not expecting us to have code enforcement guys out there. Writing tickets, but it seems like this is very subjective. I don't think that I, I, the idea of hearing a whisper does not disrupt my life. By the way, property owners outside of event centers can do whatever they want. They can have four wheelers and. Bonfires and rock concerts and parties and there's no, we don't speak to any of that. Also in the event center now it's got a, a requirement that says you can't hear a whisper at the property line. The house may be a mile away for all we know. And, you know, so I just think it's, this is not the. Standard I was looking for. To me, audible is, is not the measurement standard. If it disrupts the quality of life of someone else who's trying to go to sleep at nine thirty at night on a Friday night and it's. You know, shaking them out of their bed, so to speak. That's obviously a problem, but. If you can barely hear it, but you can hear it at the property line, but it's not disrupting, not disrupting their quality of life. I don't think that's the standard by. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be putting that in, in this code. That's me is the wrong standard.
Commissioner Howell, I understand your concerns regarding the objective standards that you are. Were wanting in the code. It is difficult to enforce because. Having such an objective standards would require having devices and measuring devices. And then it would also require training. And so when we get to the part about proving that in the court of law, we would have to. Follow the rules of evidence which would require. Providing evidence that there's been training, that the, that the machinery has been.
Traceable, calibrated.
Calibrated correctly and the officer has been trained and everything. So then there's, there's a. A burden of proof that would be required that would make it difficult for the county. It would cost money to have all of these devices and the training that goes with it. I would retract my statement in terms of when you say a whisper, is it plainly audible? It may be plainly audible, but the court would also take into the fact that it's a, it's the standard is of a reasonable person. And so the court would take a look at the circumstances at a whole, as a whole and would say that, well, would a whisper interfere with a person's enjoyment of their property? Or not? The majority of the time they would say no. So I think in terms of having that objective standard requiring. Measurements and stuff that would be difficult. The courts have indicated that as long as. We have some kind of reasonable standards, then it's not unconstitutionally vague. And that's why we have drafted the provisions as indicated, using that plainly audible and using that. Persons of reasonable sensibilities test.
And Commissioner Justin Wagner, County Council, I wanted to, to a point you spoke to that I think gives some clarity to the code drafting that's in place. What Scott's discussed today. You mentioned having a code that can be used in a civil dispute. That's not what we use zoning codes for, county codes for, is for parties to enforce privately. There's. Bodies of law and civil nuisance that parties can file against each other. The, the point of having code provisions and limitations in place is for government to be able to enforce those. You're, you're drawing the lines for government to enforce. So that's not, they haven't been drafted in a way for the private to be able to enforce against each other. They've, the idea behind drafting a code would be for government to potentially enforce, if that's the will of the board to have something like that. But I acknowledge what you're saying about the concerns of objective standard. I also would say that Sam's right, that if there was a will to do decibels and stuff like that, we would have to have the right equipment, training, all that kind of stuff to be able to enforce.
Let me be clear. I don't really want us to get into the sound measurement and training and certification. World. Again, that's not my intent. And again, if you simply say that the, the noise should not exceed some number. And again, I don't know if that forces us to enforce it. If you simply just say, and by the way, word sixty five is a ridiculous number. That's not even close to what it should be. Let me just say, normal conversation is sixty decibels. Office environment is seventy decibels. City traffic is ninety decibels. So the idea that this is, you know, that sixty five decibels would be the standard by which we would. You know, consider, you know, to be disrupt someone's peace, so to speak, is, is not the right number, but regardless. If we don't have any type of number whatsoever, if, if we did install a number in this code. Is that, you're telling me that forces us to enforce it? It forces us to go measure it? I don't know that I agree with that.
I mean, traditionally, Commissioner Howell, if we've got it in our code, we would want to have a mechanism to enforce that. The, and so that's, I mean, there's certainly, including it or not, it would be a determination of the board to make it's a little of the board determination. I would not suggest putting a number in there unless there is an interest in actually enforcing it.
Does the city enforce their sound ordinances with sound equipment?
And Commissioner Howell, I'll, well, I'll defer to Scott. Sorry.
My understanding is that they do have the equipment to do that. They do run into some challenges with that though about. Has the equipment been in the car and patrol car? Is it not available? Has it been in the car so long that it's maybe not meeting certification or calibration? So they do have challenges with it, but they are able to use it if, if necessary.
Okay, so if someone, someone mentioned fireworks a minute ago, that would almost automatically be a violation. So event centers cannot really have fireworks at all.
I, and I, yes, I think. I think that would be a noise violation if we had. Under either of these. I think part of the thing too to consider is that. Number one, a complaint would be submitted in order to drive the enforcement, start the enforcement action. And then the second one is about whether or not it is continuing or whether it's been resolved. If you do fireworks once, yes, it could be a violation. And if someone records you doing it, then yeah, maybe you could get in trouble on that. But as long as it's quick and it stops, I don't know that the enforcement would be able to catch someone doing that.
If someone wanted to have an outdoor event that created, created noise. I went to a private event. It was a turkey shoot, for example. It didn't do very well, but. That beside the point, you know, on a private property, you could do a turkey shoot, but on an event center, it sounds like this would, this would stop that from the very beginning. It's Saturday afternoon and you have a turkey shoot.
In terms of the comparison of the turkey shoot to the event center, I think at an event center. You know, we're looking at noise, a concert, a band playing, amplification, dancing that's taking place. It's a. Consistent noise that's taking place. So if we get a complaint, we're able to go out and we're able to observe it.
I'll just say this, the idea of audible at the property line, in my opinion, is not the right way to say this. So I'll, I'll oppose that part. Thank you.
Hey, yeah, thank you for the feedback.
I, I would just, a couple of thoughts. Thank you for that. I, as the individual that lives out in the country. It's very common to hear gunshots waking up in the morning for hunters, a combine working at night. It's just part of being in the. So I'm very apprehensive as the individual that lives in the country. I'm very apprehensive about over regulating what's happening here. If there are nuisance properties and nuisance event centers, and I think we need to identify what are the specific issues that we're trying to solve? And really stay laser sharp focus on that. I would tell you that if I look at the proposed changes. I do like the idea of the setbacks and really, I think the setbacks could help us with the, the fear of noise. Particularly the setbacks from residential dwellings. Where we're not having issues is that where I live at a vent center came. That's not where the issues are. It's when you get into rural residential areas and you're budding up on the property lines with neighbors that have residential houses. That's the concern. So I, I would advise that maybe we have a conversation through advanced plans and, and such. The setbacks from residential dwelling, I think is a big part of this that will help alleviate some of the concerns on noise. I, I do want to go back to slide twenty five on the hours of operation. On the hours of noise amplification outdoors at nine P M. Is that, that just seems to be, I mean, it's still daylight in the summertime at nine P M. Are we really, if, if there's a wedding out there or something and they're having a dance, we don't want them to have a. It just seems to be really prohibitive at nine P M. In my view. Still daylight at nine P M. In the summertime. So the sun hasn't set yet. I.
Chairman, for, for point of clarification on that, were, were you talking specifically on hours of operation, noise, amplification or combination of the both?
Yeah.
Just the outdoor.
I say hours of the second bullet point. Hours of noise amplification outdoor, ten A M. To nine P M. I mean, I, I can think of two event centers in my district that have weddings and they have. They were, after the wedding, they have a dance and. I mean, I just, I mean, it just feels to me out in the county that we're trying too hard to. To overburden these property owners.
Is it okay if I follow up with a question on that?
Please.
Would there be any, should, in your opinion, should we distinguish it similar to how we've distinguished the other times in terms of Sunday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday differently?
I, I would have no problem with that frankly. I really wouldn't. I mean, again, but I think the setbacks from the residential dwelling units will alleviate some of those concerns. And I, and I, you know, some of the conversations was maybe we get aggressive and double the setbacks from residential dwelling units just to make sure we're protecting that instead of trying to measure it. I, I think that's some, a path that I think that needs to be discussed and. I, I just, I, I don't want to over regulate this. I really don't. I do understand. I want to be sensitive to my colleagues that have some problem childs in their district. I, I understand that. And I've heard videos and seen videos of some challenges, but. I, I, I think we might be casting a large shadow over maybe just one or two problem child children here that. So I just want us to be cautious in over regulating. Mr. Bob.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with most of the comments from my colleagues. Someone that's owned and operated a venue out in the country. So it'd be very hard to regulate and control and it does seem like a very wide net and I. I don't know where, where to start and where to stop with this, but it does seem very restrictive and a lot of rules.
Yeah. I, I would just, because I, I do, we have a lot to cover today, so I. I would, I really would love the conversation to go towards the setbacks on residential dwelling and the hours of operation. I am totally fine with no screen required, totally fine on a site plan. Two ninety nine, again, that's a big party. So I maybe having that conditional use if they go above two ninety nine or plan to two ninety nine. But again, how's the sheriff going to regulate these things? He's not going to go in and count these individuals. It's just, it's to Bob's point earlier, out in the country, we might do things a little different. So. I, I just, I don't, I understand we need some, we need some rules and regulations. I get it. But I just want to make sure that we're doing something that's reasonable and these event centers have the opportunity to operate a business that is in demand.
This is all very, very helpful. I think going forward from here, you know, we've got Mr. Aldrich from advanced plans. We've got. Staff from our advanced plans team. I think what we'll do is we'll try and pair this back. We've got a menu of options. So we'll, we'll dial it back and then we'll see if it's the right fit for the community and see if we can get closer to, you know, meeting the needs of balancing these two factors.
Ask one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Put a bow on all this. So Bob, you're advanced plans group and you're the chair of that. If we just came out and said, we don't want to regulate anything on this, how would that sit with you all?
Here's the governance. We support that.
I mean, let's say with your, with your clients, with the applicants, if there was.
You know, you know, again, you can't. Got to be careful you not go from one extreme to the next.
Well, that's why I asked this. We've talked about the regulations and what if there's none?
You know, I'm not. You know, again, you're talking about the world according to Bob here. So that's a lot different than what's going on with advanced plans.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
But, you know, and again, the discussions that we have here with the hours of operations, I don't think that it needs to be more. Restricted out in the county than it is in the city. I mean, you can shoot fireworks here in the city until ten, eleven o'clock. And, you know, got to be careful you're not putting extra burdens on law enforcement. You know, they have a full agenda as it is, you know, that's not add to it. There's got to be some common sense, especially when it comes to zoning and regulations. And I think some of these things is that, that's on, on the, the information given. I think it's over the top. And again, it goes back to our, we're seeking directive and guidance from the board of county commissioners. If some of the feedback that been discussed here, I mean, that extremely helpful and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good. Okay. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate all the words that's gone into this from your staff. Next one.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll transition. All right. So now we'll transition to accessory apartments. So this one is coming to you because there are regulations in place. And the question has been, should we scale back the regulations on accessory apartments? So, so for this one, similar to the other one, we're going to provide information, receive feedback, answer questions. So the two questions for you to really consider as we go through this is, should we change the way that accessory apartments are considered when it comes to zoning? And if yes, are there preferences in terms of how that's done? So in order to accomplish that, we'll go through all of these things. The first one is just the process, very similar to the last one. We're at the BOCC meeting. So again, of course, it would go to Advanced Plans, MAPC, and then come back to you. In terms of the discussion, this one's a more recent project. So September eleventh, this was kicked off with the MAPC Advanced Plans. They've talked about it a number of times. And so we'll kind of go through the documents, the regulations as they've discussed so far. So our current existing regulations, first off, an accessory apartment is defined in the zoning code. So it's an additional dwelling unit essentially on a property. It shares the same utilities. Sometimes it's connected. Sometimes it's like a carriage house or a granny flat in the backyard of a property. So in terms of where they're, where they can be located, they're permitted by right in these more intensive zoning districts. Again, they're accessory and they have to meet, again, some supplementary use regulations that apply. Now, they do require a conditional use in these zoning districts. And you'll see that rural residential and SF twenty are highlighted just because they're so common in the county. So in terms of the supplementary use regulations, there's a restriction on how many units can be on a property in terms of accessory apartments, what their appearance is, the ownership and the utility service. And I would point out real quick that the appearance, it's kind of vague and it's very subjective. And so we'll talk about this more in depth, but it says here, the appearance of an accessory apartment shall be compatible with the main dwelling unit and with the character of the neighborhood. So just think about that and what that might mean for a case as we move forward. In addition, there are also some standards that apply specifically to accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments. And those are simply where they can be located. So setbacks, height, how tall they can be, and how much building separation is required. So these are in, and these apply to all accessory apartments, regardless of how they're approved in the code. So we're talking about a conditional use process. So it's typically a sixty to ninety day process, requires public notices and goes through various entities for review. At the prompting of MAPC Advanced Plans, we did a review of some prior history. And going back to twenty twenty-one, we found that there were a total of seventy-one cases. Fifty-eight percent were located in the county. So majority of accessory apartment cases take place in the county, forty-two percent in the city. A hundred percent of them were approved by the MAPC. And I believe that that's also true of the governing bodies. I can't think of one that's been denied. So it started to ask the question and reinforce the question about, are we regulating these to the right degree? So we are doing a look at other communities. We're not completely done with this. Do know that ARP and the American Planning Association picked up on this one and have looked into it. And they really highlighted these opportunities. You can have more housing options and also provides an opportunity for different lifestyles, right? Like as people age, it can give them another opportunity or in their neighborhood. There are some barriers that they noted, regulatory, procedural and financial. Not going to cover all of those, just want to acknowledge what the report found. We've looked at what other communities are doing in terms of how they regulate these. There's been a lot of changes in the planning world from a variety of different communities. So you can see that we've, we've looked at cities way out on the coast. We've looked at cities that are nearby. We're not quite done with that report. This is moving pretty quick, but we're still working through it. In terms of possible changes, there are three things that we really focused on, and that is the definition and the term that's used, the approval process, how that works and the conditions that are attached. And I'll go through all of these. All of these are located in the zoning code. So the first thing is we're proposing that the accessory apartment would be changed to the term accessory dwelling unit. That's a common term across the country. ADU is what you hear. Accessory apartment, that term is kind of unique to our area. And when people hear it, they instantly assume that it's going to be rented out because of the apartment stuff. They start to think of a multi-story apartment going in. So we think that changing this term could help clarify that. In terms of the process, currently, we use conditional use. There are two options, other options that are available to you. One is an administrative permit and the other one is by right. I'll go through what that means. So an administrative permit can be approved simply by the planning director with the zoning administrator, administrator also agreeing on it. And there's a limited form of protest on this one. It's actually, it's actually an appeal process. So what happens is the notification for this one is just to the abutting and contiguous properties. Think of all the properties that touch it or across the road or across an alley in the city. They have a fourteen day period when they can submit a protest petition. And the protest petition, if it's over fifty percent of the owners, not just the land area, but the owners, then it triggers a successful appeal and essentially it doesn't get approved. But otherwise, under other circumstances, it is approved. So the default is to approve this thing and to approve it with staff, not to go through the planning commission and not to come to the BOCC. So that would be the administrative permit. If there are protests over fifty percent, what happens is it's denied, but the owner always has the opportunity to come forward with a conditional use. So they're not, they're not locked out. They're not prevented from doing it necessarily in the future. The second option is to allow it by right. And there's some details, sorry for the folks from MABCD. We haven't, we haven't quite worked this out yet in terms of how the site plans reviewed. So I want to acknowledge that right away. But allowed by right would mean if they meet all of the conditions, they don't even have to come to the planning commission. They don't have to come to the planning department at all. They can simply apply for their permits and move forward. So question, right? So, so that's an option. And if they don't meet the conditions, they can't meet the conditions, they can always apply for a conditional use. So just in the back of your mind, we've always got that as an option, conditional use. So do it. So it's really, how can we streamline this? In terms of the conditions, here are some of the things that we were talking about. A concern that the Advanced Plans Committee has had or members of the Advanced Plans is, if a conditional use is approved for an accessory apartment on a given property and it's a big property, what happens when the property gets subdivided? Then do all those, so we've tried to put in language here to very, very much clarify that it's limited to just one accessory apartment. The other thing too, then, is, you remember that clause that I pointed out, the condition that it's got to be similar to the existing home and similar to the context? It's really vague. It's hard to enforce. It's been debated at meetings. It's not really something I enjoy going round and round with. So what we're proposing is to eliminate that from properties outside of the established central area. And that's, the established central area is contained entirely within the city of Wichita. So within the established central area, there are questions about architectural style, exterior materials, yada, yada, yada. I'm not going to go in depth with those because we're talking about the unincorporated county. I just want to acknowledge that's in there. You've got the draft at your table. So if you've got any questions, let me know. But it's really kind of a city issue. Ownership, we clarified text to indicate what if you do an accessory apartment with a duplex. Again, not something we're going to commonly see in the unincorporated counties. So I'll just go ahead and move on. Size. An ECA would be limited to a thousand square feet. No such limitation in the county. Again, very hands off. Parking, none required. Most of the time, it's just going to be one car. The property owners will figure it out, in my opinion. So essentially, I guess what this whole presentation is about is you've, we're proposing, or you've got the option to think about, what if we did accessory apartments in a different way with zoning? And do you prefer to have it done as, if you, if you want to change it, do you want to do it as an administrative permit? Or do you want to do it as by right? It's allowed.
Scott, thank you. Appreciate the work that's being done on this. Any questions or comments? I would say that I, I would like to find a path to do it by right. I understand there's some reasonableness here and there's some standards. I do like the suggested provisions that you're adding, particularly one ADU per lot. Instead of, I think that's helpful and necessary. And I think this is one viable option that our community is going to need to help with the affordable housing challenges and the aging population to give options. So I want to try to find a way to get this to by right, if at all possible. And to reduce the timeframe also. I understand the administrative side of it and that might be an option. reducing some of that timeframe where they just have to go apply for a permit and do this, I think would be really, really helpful. So Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. How do you handle the issue of secondary address or utility connections and billing for those utilities?
I'm going to turn the folks over MABCD because we generally don't handle, in terms of addressing and utility connections. So first off, with utilities, just know that they have, with an accessory apartment, they have to be this shared with the primary dwelling.
So the meter for the house, the regular main dwelling unit would have the consumption for the electric for the ADU?
That's my understanding. So they'd be shared. In terms of addressing, I'm not, I think that's at the building permit process. So I don't know if you want to address it now, or do you want Chris to come up and address it?
There, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Chris Laborman, MABCD. So sir, is your question specific, would that be specifically if they wanted a separate address for the dwelling unit versus the, the address given to the parcel?
Yeah, if it was a rental, for example, I would assume that the person living in the, in the ADU would want to have a separate address, but maybe I'm wrong.
So and generally with those, you know, we could add an A or a B or a one hundred, or we could potentially split the address. Generally, in the county, addressing is not nearly as challenging as in the city because we have a lot more numbers to, a lot more space to work with. So a lot more numbers available to us. So, and I don't know if Tim has any more, so.
This is just technicality, but say I wanted to walk up to the front door and knock on the door, talk to the homeowner. I could do that on a, on the main dwelling unit because their front door faces the street. And there's, I think, reasonable provisions for someone to come up and knock on that front door. How does that work in the backyard if it's an ADU in the back?
And we leave that to the property owner. So as long as their site plan meets setback, meets setbacks, meets utilities, they're going to have a lot of options as to where they would want to put that. Oftentimes in the county, these, or even city too, they don't have a separate drive. So you would be required to walk around. The majority of these, we don't see as rentals, but yes, that, that does occur. So.
So what about the sewer tap? Would it be one tap per lot still? Then you have to have those joined together before it hits the main sewer main?
In the county, there is no sewer main, be it a septic or a lagoon.
Okay, so it's only for the unincorporated?
Correct. So, so they, they are on the same sewer or septic in the county. And then in the city, in the city, this separate building obviously has to be tapped to the sewer separately.
So you can have one lagoon feeding both the main dwelling, the main house and the ADU?
Yes, and the way we have that currently, don't, don't let me say this wrong, Tim, but the way we have that currently is, they have to be on the same system in order to not be able to split the units. Because they're, they're permitted as two units under the CU. It's two units on the same property under that same ownership. So those steps are there so that they could not easily split those. If they want them split, they need to go through the lot split process and separate those officially. In which case, all utilities, addressing and everything would then be parceled out.
Thank you.
So, all right, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do agree with the Chairman about by right. And I think all of the minor adjustments that you want to make, glance through this real quick. You're saying that you basically redlined the existing.
Yes, sir.
So this was already existing.
No, we provided you with two copies. One is as an admin permit and one is as a by right. Want to acknowledge that there could be a blend between the two. The city may want to go one direction. The county may want to go a different, so. But they show you essentially what the language changes would be.
I'm in, I'm in general agreement with all the adjustments you want to make. But just glancing through it, it's mainly just you correcting the ADU.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of that. Yes, sir.
Your adjustments.
Bob, any thoughts as to what you've heard here?
Thank you. Just to give you feedback from a lot of the discussion that we had at the Advanced Plans, the consensus there, they were leaning more towards a permit process. And the reason being, and to give you an example, we had a conditional use of some property on the northeast part of Cedric County. And it was seventy-seven, seventy-eight acres. The conditional use was for the entire acreage. And when you're looking at a, an accessory apartment, the, you know, we've had a lot of, of conditional uses come up, you know, last year and a half. Tremendous amounts this year. That is normally was tied into, you know, to a relative, like that you want to take care of or something like that. You know, keep it in a family thing. And, you know, now what we're seeing, again, going, what concerns us is that when you have this amount of acreage, for example, we just had one approximately thirty acres the other day, is that why do you need to permanently have a conditional use on that many acreage? When you're only looking at, I'm using for an example, three acres now from where the house is and what you're trying to do there. And we're just afraid that this is going to wind up getting out of hand, especially when you start doing duplexes and everything else now, or each one of those duplexes, because they, each one of them do, do assess an accessory apartment. You know, when you look at other considerations, water usage, is there water out there on these properties that they can sustain? You know, another accessory apartment or apartments, for example. But again, I think, you know, keeping it with the site plan, definitely support that. But this, again, the site plan doesn't need to encompass the entire acreage, you know, seventy acres, thirty acres, or one of it, keep it just right where, you know, where it's, where it's supposed to be right.
Good feedback, Bob. Good feedback.
And those are some of the, the concerns on that. That's why we were looking at for, at a permit process. I think if you're looking at keeping it for use as for take care of a family member or something like that, I have absolutely no problem, that being by right. I'm just concerned about, you know, the big, the big acreage out there.
That's good feedback, Scott. Do you make sense kind of what some of the concerns are? I would agree with some of those concerns. So maybe some language that might alleviate some of that.
Sure. Yes, sir. Well, we'll work on that with advanced plans and see if we can't get that button.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for that. That's good. Next on the list.
Okay, I know that we're running short on time, so I will just do a verbal update on the rest of these and try and get us through these. So short-term rentals, I don't have, no PowerPoint, of course, but just want to give you a heads up that on January fourteenth is the date that we're aiming for to bring that to you for code changes. You previously saw those at another staff meeting. We got the sense that you were comfortable with those. So that's what you'll see. And I'll, I'll work on maybe getting some briefings going so you can get more in-depth discussion on it. The next one then is public notifications for zoning cases. The city of Wichita is interested in, at least they have expressed interest, we'll see if they remain this way, interest in modifying mail-out notifications for zoning cases. And in this way, to have it go not just to the property owners, but also to the property when the address is different than the owner's address. And in that way, tenants and people who are renting or staying at the property would be notified. This item is coming up to Advanced Plans. And so the question is whether or not the county is interested in us looking at making changes to the, to the unincorporated county notifications as well? Or if you'd prefer not to?
Can I, can you just clarify, what problem are we trying to solve with this?
I, I think for the city, we've taken this item out to, and I'm sorry, this is where city and county stuff kind of blends. We've taken cases out to the district advisory boards and folks will, will be present, members of the public, and they will indicate, well, I didn't know anything about this. And the dab will, after a series of questions, will discover that they are someone who was renting out of location as opposed to the owner. So I think that's part of the issue is they want to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity.
I, I'll just say for myself, I'm not interested in doing this in the county. I, the property owner, the business owner of the landlord should be receiving his business notifications, not the client or the tenant. And so I, my view, and I respect everyone's opinion, but I'm not interested in doing this in the county.
Chairman, you know, being through this process myself, it adds a lot of cost whenever you start changing the application area. You start, you start changing who's getting the mailings and stuff. It's a significant cost and it.
cost and it, it may just be a small development or something. And I mean, it could push it to be cost prohibitive to try to do changes.
Uh, maybe one other commissioner would, applying?
Well, I would, I would agree. I, I can respect the, the, in the, at the city with the dabs and the number of zoning cases happen. And I could see what rent, the rentees want to uh, voice their concern about something that they don't own the property. And so I, Chairman articulated how I feel as well, unless there's a compelling reason. Again, Bob, hate to lean on you. If there's a reason that we would want to indicate the uh, uh, let's say you've got a the what-if in the farm world. So you've got somebody leasing the, the ground, the farm versus the owner of the farm. Uh, I think you'd want the farm owner to get the notice, not the person doing the work.
Correct.
Correct. A duplicate to the word.
That's correct.
Then my, I would, I would agree with that.
Okay. Well, well, thank you. This feedback is very helpful. Um.
But Bob, the way you, the way you're getting to talk, you should be a future county commissioner.
You know, again, this whole thing started from a city council representative that had concerns in the city. Again, there's a di- a difference between uh, the city and the county. And again, this is the world according Bob here. Uh, that as a business owner, as a property owner, um, I, I don't think that uh, the uh, somebody that's renting my property, that's the, the leasee has any, any right, needed no right to know when it comes to what's going on with my, with my business, if you will. Uh, now, when they lease that property, uh, you know, they have an agreement wi- with, with me uh, that they're going to pay a certain amount of dollars and this is what they, they get out of that per month. That's it. That's the, where it pretty much stops on that. Uh, I mean, there's other, you know, laws and everything else that would might, you know, come into play there. But when it comes to notifications and stuff like that, it's none of their business what I'm doing with my property. That's just my personal uh, thoughts on it. But when it comes to the county, that's a whole different world out there than it is with the city.
It is.
Uh, so I, I concur with the county commissioners' responses there.
I am, thank you. Um, I'm, I am curious about the costs here. Um, the, the homeowner, if they live at the property that's uh, in his, in the area of, near the project, they get the, they get the whole packet, I guess. They get a packet from the planning, which, which is quite a bit of information. Is that correct?
So they'll receive a letter and uh, the letter will simply indicate the case, uh, number, wh- what is uh, what is being requested and uh, opportunities to participate. So it's, it's, it's actually, uh, it's not the whole staff report that they'll receive. It's just the letter.
It just says your two dollars and sixty-four cents per piece of mail? And twenty-three dollars for pro- for the search? Again, if you're doing that for the area around the project and you find out this particular house is not owned by a person that's living there, that the owner is a different location, you send that to them. I guess in that particular situation, you're talking about just adding one more address. You already did all the work. They shouldn't add twenty-three dollars at that point.
Uh, so what it does is it would require an additional fee of, I believe, five dollars uh, for each address. So you multiply uh, five times as many properties are in the notification area. And that's uh, what results in the increase for the applicant to pay to the title company.
Again, I, I understand the point you're all making and I, you know, I, I want to be transparent and I want to make sure everyone knows and has an interest. I don't want to. And again, this is, this is in addition to the sign that's there for the zoning.
Yes, sir.
It, to me is the one piece that is already very transparent. They can see that sign and they should. I don't think the sign's appropriate size. Now, I think some of those are placed funny because they're parallel with the road, but other than that.
A- a- and I would love to have that conversation at a future date, but yeah.
I don't want to spend any more money. I, I just seem, it just seemed like it, it shouldn't cost that much money to send out an additional letter. And again, I don't know if the fiscal, fiscal note actually did, I mean, it doesn't really matter who lives there. It just simply says the owner of record is not at this address, therefore we trigger that address. We just send out one more copy and it should be a very small amount of cost. So even five dollars sounds like it's, it's more than it should be. It should be like a dollar per piece, but.
Happy, yeah, sure. Happy to chat with you more about it, sir. Um, we, and we've got the numbers and the information we've gotten from the title companies, so.
I, I can concede. I, I just want to be transparent. I don't want to be accused of being, you know, processed if people don't know what's going on. That's all.
Appreciate that. Okay. See what's next on your list.
Okay. I'm so sorry. I'm over time. Uh, I'll try and cover these briefly. So uh, want to let you know, we have received a solar application. Uh, Mission Clean Energy has submitted a solar application to our department. Uh, the application has been deemed to be incomplete. Uh, there's still a number of things that uh, after staff have gotten together, we did a staff team with folks from a variety of different departments to look at it. Uh, we have provided that feedback about the application being incomplete back to the company. Uh, I know that they are working to address it. My understanding is that this is not uncommon to have happen with such large applications. This, the application is like a thousand pages thick. It's huge. Um, so they're working on addressing that. And we expect that that will come in in the next, I, I, I don't know what timeframe, but I expect that it will come in fairly, fairly soon.
Probably not perfect to talk too much about an application that isn't formalized and it's incomplete, but we did do a lot of work on solar with a lot of uh, we have a lot of regulations in regards to what is or isn't permissible. So.
Um, I can, Scott, as we said here, I just got a call from the media asking for the process. Could you walk us through the process?
Sure. Um, well, it's, it's very similar to a lot of the slides that we've seen. It's a conditional use. So what will happen is that uh, it will go to the M A P C. That will be a public hearing. So that's an opportunity for members of the public to come in and comment on it. Um, then what will happen is that uh, after the M A P C, it will come to the board of county commissioners. And of course, that's another opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Um, throughout the process, people can always submit comments, or if they have questions, they can contact the planning department. Again, we don't have a, a complete application yet, but we're more than happy to accept comments if anyone has anything in writing. Uh, that's helpful for us because that allows us to attach it to the packet when we uh, move that along to the other uh, entities.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, Scott. Last but not least.
Last but not least, just want to let you know that we've gotten some uh, suggestions from uh, W A B A, the Wichita Area Builders Association for some changes to the subdivision regulations. I just want to let you know that we've received those. Uh, we've gone through them. We've, I've highlighted uh, based on staff feedback. Uh, I've highlighted them to indicate areas where there's agreement with staff and where there are uh, more discussion is needed. And we've provided that feedback back to W A B A. So I just want to give you a status update on that and simply make you aware.
Okay. That's very helpful.
If I'd comment on that, I, thank you, Scott, for at least, I, I know that I'd been approached by some members of W A B A that, that there were some inconsistencies and some improvements that could be made and shortened some timeframes on the permitting, blah, blah, blah. I, I don't, I can't speak specifically, but I'm glad if you all are engaging the W A B A group to uh, what, what they want to do. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think that is a robust staff meeting, Scott. You did a good job. There's a lot there. Bob, I want to thank you for coming and engaging. I think you were helpful. Sit down at the same table because these things have to go back to plans, advanced plans. So.
Thanks for the invite. I appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, uh, Tom, we good? Okay, tomorrow morning, it's eight thirty A M. Start, okay? Eight thirty A M. Start. Uh, not a whole lot on the agenda, but it'll be important. So, see you tomorrow.